Good evening and welcome to a regular Board of Education meeting of the Cogga Heights Schools. Mr. Mucio, would you call it today is May 27th, 2020, and it is 7:00 PM. Mr. Mucio, would you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Eder. This is Mrs. Eder. I think you're muted.
Hello?
Yep.
Hi, do you hear me?
Yep, gotcha.
Present.
Mrs. Schukert.
Here.
Mr. Sujaki.
He's not present, but he may join us later.
Okay, Mr. Namon.
Here.
Mr. Dobbins.
Here, four present, one absent. Would you join or let me welcome everyone? On behalf of the Board, I'd like to welcome our students, staff, parents, and interested community members to this evening's Board of Education meeting. We'll have legislative passed House Bill 197 in response to the COVID-19 public health crisis that Bill grants permissive authority to define state and local public bodies to hold public meetings by way of teleconference or video conference until December 2020 or during the period of the COVID-19 emergency, whichever occurs first. In order to hold such meeting, the public body must meet the qualifications established in the bill related to providing adequate public notice, public participation, and distribution of information and materials. The Board believes that it has satisfied all of HB 197's criteria to hold this evening's meeting by teleconference or video conference. A copy of the Board meeting agenda is available to review on our school district's website. Would you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands unafraid, under God, indivisible,
with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a motion to approve this evening's agenda?
No move.
Mr. Namon moves.
Second.
Ms. Schukert, seconds. Any discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Mucio, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Namon.
Aye.
Mrs. Schukert.
Aye.
Mrs. Eder.
Aye.
Mr. Dobbins.
Aye, the motion passed is 4-0. Comments from the public. The Board values and encourages public comment on education issues and is now asking the public to email comments that it might have otherwise provided during the public public comment portion of this meeting to the following email address. The Board will strive to respond to all comments received as promptly as possible. Mr. Mucio, your business.
Thank you, Mr. Dobbins. Have a couple items tonight for approval. Item 4A, here's business approval of minutes. Motion to approve the minutes of May 13th, 2020's regular meeting. And May 20th, 2020 special meeting as found in attachment T1. Item 5A, motion to accept bank reconciliation financial reports and payments for board review as of April 30th, 2020 is prepared and certified by the Treasurers accurate as found in attachment T2. 5B, motion to approve new vendors to the school district per W9's attach as found in attachment T3. 5C, motion to approve purchase orders over 5,000 as found in attachment T4. 5D, motion to approve a modification to the permanent appropriations for fiscal year 2020 as found in attachment T5. Item 6A, motion to approve the amended continuing exempt classified staff contract for Kathy Martin Assistant Treasurer effective July 1st, 2020. 6B, motion to approve two-year exempt classified staff contract for Elix Rodriguez Payroll and HR Specialist effective July 1st, 2020 through June 30th, 2022. As for motions 4, 5, and 7.
So moved.
Second. So what is, Ms. Schukert moved and I seconded the motion. Is there any discussion?
Yes, just wanted to go over a couple items. For item 5A, just wanted to point out a couple items tonight. For the modification of the permanent appropriations, I'll bring up item T2C, which is our budget versus actuals. And in the spreadsheet here, we're going to have that item tonight, which is in column X. And it's a drop from 15,000 to 12,000 here. And it's in Fund O8 or Endowment Fund. And it's just due to the fact that 15,000 was the amount that we had for the entire year. And it's just higher than what we need. So we're just dropping it down by $3,000 to the 12,000 modifications to the appropriations. But also at the same time, shift the spreadsheet over a little bit. We look at column O. We have an adjustment to revenue here at the top. And I always like to mimic these two items. So we can see here that there's a date under every one of these amendments that corresponds to adjustments to the appropriations. So for example, 422 in column W, get a couple modifications to the appropriations during that board meeting. I also corresponded with an adjustment of revenue at the same time. So I like to have these happen same occurrence. It's also easier when trying to get the do not exceed certificate from the county to have at the same time. So by having, you know, each one of these modifications to the permanent appropriations, the county does provide us with a do not exceed certificate. So that's something. The adjustment to revenue deals with a decrease that we have with the state aid that we saw. So I'll talk about that more tonight, too, but I just wanted to kind of point out more than anything.
Can you zoom on some of that? The board members are having a hard time seeing it.
Yeah, it's kind of small. Let's see, this works. Yeah, it's kind of weird. So I'll just kind of go back to column X right here. So that's just the item tonight that we're going to be looking at.
We just talked about, I don't know if this house, we just talked about this today in one of my Zoom meetings for my staff. It's, I think it's with Google Meet that it's harder to get the presentation bigger versus Zoom you can. I don't mind like going on my phone, but I'm going to be staring at my phone like I can't even see your presentation like.
Yeah, it's hard on the phone. Yeah, it's definitely going to be.
No, I mean on the screen right now, it's about as big as.
If you, Lyndy, if you click the the grid in that upper right-hand corner to make it as a, like the strike through, it should just isolate Matt's spreadsheet. So when I click it, I can just see his spreadsheet a little bit bigger. And then everybody's in that right-hand corner.
So click on what? I'm sorry to.
No, that's right. In the top right-hand corner where you see the grid.
Yeah.
Just, just click it. So there's a line going through it and then it should, it should show Matt's presentation.
Well, yeah, and that's, and I was just showing it for like a, you know, 10 second, just kind of wanted to care, you know, show everybody the 15,000 that's been carrying.
Okay.
I just kind of wanted to show the two opposite sides to the
Okay.
appropriations and the revenues. Second item I wanted to kind of point out to everybody tonight. Here in this item 5A, it's going to be, I'll make this figure T2D. So this is our lead sheet for the general fund that we have. And I just want to point out that we're going to see now the column here for the May 2025 year forecast has been input. So that's going to be there just to kind of balance against where we're at right now. The last item I just want to point out for this one, 5A is going to be our tax revenue. So for here, for our tax revenue, look at lines 6, 7, and 8 that we have in the green. They're going to be our credits, our homestead exemption and our credits. We had no amounts that came through for April. Bigger. We're going to see those amounts come through in May.
Good.
Well, it's good, but it's bad at the same time, too, because they should have came in April. So originally I had these white boxes over here in the month of April. And I called over to Cogga County and I called ODE just to see what was taking place. And as it turns out, every school district in our county did not receive homestead and our credits in the month of April because Cogga County is behind, I believe, due to the coronavirus. So we should see that payment come through. It's about 220,000 that we're going to see come in May. So it looks like it's going to be made in the month of May, if not early June. But again, it's something that historically we've seen in the month of April. And my understanding is Cogga County is behind in providing that information to ODE.
Do they have even staff working? Cause I couldn't even get through to them myself when I had to call for something.
Yeah.
Did you actually talk to someone?
Yeah, it's yes, at OD I was able to talk to our
With OD.
Our area coordinator for that. Cogga County, it's kind of hit or miss, but the budget people are there. And they're on. But again, it's, you know, I just wanted to kind of point out something that I saw that is unusual and it looks to be a result of the coronavirus COVID-19.
The anticipation that this is going to come by the time, you know, by the end of May, do you think? Or do you think this will end up coming in June?
We're in the last week right now. So if it doesn't come in this week, it's coming early June. So you know, but again, at the same time, it should have come to us and everybody else in Cogga County in April. So.
Hopefully it comes before.
Already a month behind.
Yep.
As long as they give it to us in the fiscal year, you know, ultimately, that's the best case scenario. I guess we're right right now with it. But just wanted to make that known to everybody here that, you know, the county is kind of responding to, you know, situations with the coronavirus and everything going on and they're even a little bit behind as they go. Item 5B, new vendors we have to the district. Nothing out of the ordinary that we would have. Just kind of bring this up, share. Uploading. We have eight. Just wanted to point out that the, there's a typo here. It should be building supplies, not building supply company. But everything else is reasonable and standard. Any questions on this item?
I have a question. I don't know if it falls under this or, or something coming up, but I, I think it's more for like Tom and Ted, and I could have called, but I think it's something that sounds like it might be helped or it might be useful to say in public. My question is like with textbooks and stuff like that, are you guys, when you're going to purchase stuff, are you looking to just do status quo? Like, you know, like we're ordering textbooks as we normally would or supplies that the kids need physically when it's like a traditional classroom setting versus the online supplies and materials?
Yeah, Lyndy, that's a good question. So the, the health textbooks that are on this evening, there's only hardbound available. There, we're getting, we're getting to a point in some of the health adoptions that there's, they're no longer supporting health textbooks to the company. So we actually only had two choices for the health textbooks this year. Typically, when we do, when we do the purchases, all of the, all of the major companies have the online platform. So when we did science a couple of years ago, math, all of the, they all have that online platform. So as we project to what this fall is going to look like, students will be able to access those textbooks online. But for these two, but for the two specific health ones, there's no online access, but the the AP Physics and the the personal finance do have an online platform to it.
Thank you.
And that's part of the package.
Thanks.
Our next item 5C, which is going to be purchase orders for approval over 5,000. If we look at our attachment, we have three for tonight. We have the I-ready renewal. We have the reading plus renewal. And then we have the books that Dr. Clarus was talking about for grades four and five, all coming from the general. Any questions on these? Item 5D is going to be the approval of the modification of the permanent appropriations that we have. And again, it's a decrease of $3,000 to Fund O8, which is our endowment fund. And it's just due to the fact that our original amount of $15,000 was higher than what was needed for the fiscal year. And again, at the same time, I like to mimic both sides. So if we ever have an adjustment to revenue, I always like to have that corresponding adjustment to the expenses. Because when we provide that to the county, they give us back the do not exceed certificate. And having both sides, you know, whenever you make that adjustment, just makes it easier from a budgeting standpoint. Again, we have that here in the highlighted yellow, which is our endowment fund, total eight, $3,000. And this is kind of the history that we've been going on for this fiscal year. So we've had a couple modifications as we've gone along the way. Any questions on that item? We have the contract tonight for our Assistant Treasurer Kathy Martin. Contract as well for Elix Rodriguez, our payroll and HR specialist. The items I have for tonight.
Very good, Mr. Mucio. Unless there's any further discussion, I'd make a motion, or we've already had the motion. Would you call the roll then, Mr. Mucio? Before we proceed, I wanted the minutes to note that Mr. Sujaki joined the meeting about 7:10 PM. Am I right? Gary, you're joined us?
That's correct. Thank you, Mr. Dobbins.
Sure. And Ms. Mucio, this is Joe Namon. Actually have a question for you. One question. So actually like, so what, what are we, what are we going to get credit for regarding like the CARES Act? I know there are certain things that like we can get credit for. I know we talked a little bit about some salary information before, but, but what, what's eligible from the school system? Cause I know that there's like tax credits that you can get for like staff employees that are kind of like not working at full capacity, but that might be just for public company. If you can explain a little bit about what we qualify for.
Yeah, absolutely. I'm sorry?
Isn't that in the agenda further down?
Right. Yeah, Joe, it's, yeah, I have it for 8B. So we'll jump to that one.
No problem. Yeah, we'll talk about it later.
Yeah. So back to the roll call for the Treasurers consent agenda. Mrs. Schukert.
Aye.
Mr. Dobbins.
Aye.
Mrs. Eder.
Aye.
Mr. Sujaki.
Aye.
And Mr. Namon.
I'm sorry, the motion passes 5-0. Mr. Mucio, Treasurers Business.
Yep, just had two items for discussion. The first one, 8A, it's the discussion on Governor DeWine's state foundation aid cuts and the fact that we have to pay back an amount to ODE. So we were officially notified May 19th, 2020 by ODE that as a result of Governor DeWine's announced 300 million state foundation aid cuts that we will have to pay back those funds that we owe. We have three options to pay back the funds. So option one is to repay the funds during fiscal 20 using ODE's accounts receivable system. Option two is going to be to repay the funds by paper check. Option three is going to be to repay the funds through a deduction in fiscal 21. Now I'm going to go through the math and talk about how much we owe and how much they're deducting. But my recommendation would be number one, to repay the funds in fiscal 20 using ODE's accounts receivable system. And the main point would be to record the budget cut in the applicable fiscal year, which is 2020 that those cuts were made. The cuts for us, the full amount of the cuts to our district is 231,630, which equates to 42% of our state foundation aid received in fiscal 20, this fiscal year. So our original state foundation aid before the cuts was 542,309. Now, ODE has a methodology in which they're recouping those funds. Maybe the easiest way would have been they send an invoice out to every school district and every school district would have to pay the state back that amount of what those cuts would have been for each of those schools. That may be the cleanest way to do it, which is what they're ultimately doing at the end of the day. If we have to pay back funds to the state. However, OD is deducting from the foundation settlements amounts owed. So for example, if we didn't, if we had enough in foundation that we were receiving every month and there are two payments, two foundation payments made to every school district from the state every month. So if we had enough still left in the final three payments, which would be the second of May and the first and second of June, then we wouldn't have to worry about paying the state back. And when we do have to pay the state back, you know, if we go this route of number one, which is paying the accounts receivable system in just one clean ACH swoop, that's so much easier. And having it deducted from the foundation. So ODE's methodology here is actually very cumbersome. So it's a very short answer, or excuse me, it's a short question with a long answer attached to it. So what we have here, and I tried to break everything down and I'll click on a couple of these attachments here, too. But we have our original amount here in state aid for fiscal 20. Four, excuse me, 542,339. So Governor DeWine announced cuts to school districts and our cuts are 231,630. So our balance, our new amount for state aid, it's going to be 310,709. Now, the amount that we have received as of the May number one foundation payment was 474,548. So that leaves the amount to be taken in this fiscal year fiscal 20 to be 163,839. So what the Ohio Department of Education is going to do is they're going to take that from our final three payments. So if we divide that amount by three, it brings up 54,630. One issue is it doesn't perfectly work that way. So what happens is there's an adjustment that ODE inputs within each of these payments. And I'm going to bring up an example of that. So what happens is we have our three 54,000 amounts. So back to this. So in May number two, June number one, and June number two, we're going to see 54,613 deducted from each of those foundation payments. At the same time, ODE is inputting this adjustment into each of those foundation payments that we have. I'm going to click on this right down here, which is the May number two. I'm going to make this a lot bigger. So this is the May number two payment from the state that we have. And we can see the line item here, which is our foundation formula. And we have the amount year to date, 474,163 to be taken. This is our new amount, 310,000. And this is the 54,613 that they're going to take for the final three payments. Now down here below, they have this line item here, which is their state insufficient funds adjustment. It's the 64,982. Think of it as a plug number. What they're trying to do is get our total payment to equal zero for the last three payments. So by having this negative here, and we also get other items mixed in with our foundation. So it's not just this foundation formula, but it's all these additional items as well. So we have a couple here, which is going to be our preschool special education funding, as well as our special education transportation. And then we have all of our transfers. So we have an amount for the ESC. We have our community school, which is the Char School Deduction. We have our scholarship transfer. We have our other adjustments. I'll point these out to, well, they're actually on recorded and purchase service on the long sheets that we have. And we have any other adjustments that would come through. So we have a bit for the SF14 and a bit for excess cost. So at the end of the day, when we factor this amount in, which is the amount that we owe back to the state, 54,000, again, they're going to take it in three payments. We have all these other payments in the middle and then they put in this plug number here, this adjustment. And this brings our final foundation amount that we're to receive to zero. So that's how ODE is calculating it for school districts in the state of Ohio. So for us, we're going to see a net amount on each one of these payments. So May number two, June number one, and June number two of positive, we're going to see 10,361 coming. Again, that's to make up for those other negatives that we have to put on our books for the other items that we have. So we're going to see a positive 31,107, which is the net amount of those three amounts added together plus the 474,548, which was the amount that we received year to date brings us to 505,655, which is the amount of foundation that we will ultimately receive in fiscal 20. So when we subtract the 310,709 from that, that brings us to, and again, that's the amount up here, which is what our foundation aid for fiscal 20 should be. So when we deduct what we get paid from what we should be at, we get 194,946 remaining amount that we owe the state of Ohio. So this is our payback amount. And I have down here in stars, see attachment insufficient. So right here, this attachment insufficient was provided by ODE. I'm going to make this bigger, too. So what we have here is every district that owes money back to the state, the county that they're in. This is that May number two insufficient amount. And this is the estimated total due to ODE. So if we go down to ourselves here in yellow, we can see that Cogga, Cogga Heights Schools is going to owe back to the state. So this is the estimated total due to ODE of 194,946. So again, what I wanted to do was kind of show how ODE arrived at their methodology and calculate it out for everybody to see. So again, it's very cumbersome of how they're doing it. It would be a lot easier if they just sent us a quick invoice to pay the cut amount, 231,000. And then within two minutes, we can, you know, either have a check or ACH it through OD's portal. We're done. We're recorded instead of kind of this long methodology that they use to arrive at the amount. Now I wanted to put up for discussion tonight, which way we want to go with these three options that they provided to us. So again, it's repay the funds in fiscal 20 using ODE's accounts receivable system. Number two, repay the funds by paper check. Or three, repay the funds through a deduction in fiscal 21. And I would just say if we start mixing fiscal years with how OD is kind of calculating this, it's going to get a lot more tricky to account for it. And again, my preference, my recommendation would be number one to repay the funds in this fiscal year fiscal 20. And I looked at their system and it's very easy to use. So if we can't use this system in any way, shape, or form, we would opt to cut them a check. But again, OD is also advising that they don't have a lot of people in the office right now and their preferred method would be number one, that schools use the accounts receivable system over paper check to them.
Matt did. I'm sorry, go ahead.
But wanted to get everybody's thoughts on how we want to go about this.
First of all, I agree with you. I would rather we don't mix up funds from fiscal year 20 and fiscal year 21. I do, I do agree with you with that. My follow-up question is, have we already received that 10,369 for the May two payment?
Yes, yes.
We have already received that? Cause it seems kind of silly for them to give us money and then and we have to give back more money back, you know?
Right.
Just giving them the 163,839 over three payments. And then they're giving us an extra $10,000 in three different payments. Then in actuality, then they want us to give back 194,000. It's kind of silly.
Oh, I 100% agree with you. Again, this isn't the way I would calculate it. I would just, you know, send districts an invoice check, you know, two minutes turnaround and cut it back to them. That's how I would do it.
I think different.
And again,
Oh, go ahead.
But also too, it's not necessarily $10,000 that we're pocketing. We're getting a payment of $0. So what they're doing is they're using that net amount against each other. So we have a negative here that they're deducting. They're putting a positive plug number and that plug number makes up all of these small amounts in the middle to ultimately have us drive at $0. So we get nothing from.
Yes, for some reason they decided to make it even more complicated than it needed to be.
Yes.
And make it hurt even more. Welcome to ODE. It's so ridiculous.
Right. And we're not, we're not paying any, we're ultimately going to pay to the dollar the amount of our announced cuts by Governor DeWine, but it's just accounting wise, how we get there and how ODE going about it as opposed to just sending an invoice. We cut, you know, either a check or which is very simple and it's like a. which is very simple and it's like a one transaction occurrence and we're done and we report on our books, as opposed to having all these, you know, interactions that we're going to have with each of these foundation payments as we go. So it's a it's a unique way.
I can't even understand the justification for it. Like, why even makes any sense?
Well, could it, could it be that different districts are in different financial situations? So there's at least options and they're able to do, you know?
Yeah.
I mean, not every, every this school district, most districts aren't in the same financial, you know?
Right. It, it, Lindy, right. You're, you're absolutely correct. Some districts may have a shortage of cash flow. So by having the option of extending those deductions to occur in fiscal twenty-one helps them. So if we look at, you know, this Excel spreadsheet that ODE sent out, which is the estimated total due back to them. And again, ours is a hundred ninety-four thousand from what they're going to deduct from us as we go. And again, this is the May number two insufficient number that they have here. But we can see other amounts for other school districts too. I mean, this is a high amount, you know, after the close of a fiscal year, if we look at, you know,
Yeah, crazy.
Right. We're looking at, you know, for Brexville, six hundred eighty-nine thousand.
Seventy thousand dollars.
Matt, can I have a question?
Seven hundred thousand dollars. Almost. It's crazy.
Can I ask a question? Are, are we looking at cutting anything or? You know, that's pretty like a significant amount. We know we're not getting the student wellness next year, which is another, I should know this amount, but I'm not going to rattle off a random number. So I mean, it's, it sounds like it's pretty significant. Our, our decrease of funds for next year.
Right. No, we're actually in a very good spot. I'm, you know, in my opinion, through my lens, we do not need to, and you know, Tom, feel free to come in here too on this. But from my lens, no, we do not need to cut at all. You know, we are financially stable and we've, you know, I plan for a lot of, you know, not worst case scenarios, but I leave enough contingency and reasonable estimates in there. You know, if something negative were to transpire, there's enough contingency to kind of overcome that. So at this point in time.
Lindy, we didn't make any, we, we're looking at maybe pushing some things out that would have been on the, you know, when you saw the gym floor in there, we're going to push the gym floor out another year to wait and see how things stabilize. So it's, we're, as Matt said, we're, we're in a favorable situation right now, but we don't want to press that. So if there's items that we're taking a real hard look at that we can push out another year, we're, we're going to do that just to make sure that the recovery comes the way we need it to come.
Well, and I wondered like too, does it mean we need to look at, you know, speeding up the levy a little bit more than we had originally thought? I mean, there's a lot of still kind of things that are out there that we're not really sure about, but okay.
That, that, that's, that's, that's the key question. And we'll, we'll see when the county, when the collections start coming in, that'll give us a better idea of how we may need to do that. So I, people are getting back to work right now. So that's, I think that's in our favor as well. But we're, we're on solid, solid ground, you know, at least for the next fiscal year for sure. We, we're just, you know, everybody knows that we weren't adding anything. I told the supervisors that we're not, there's nothing to be added that that budgets are going to be a little bit tighter. I've already started to take a look at some things and just send, hey, we're going to push this out another year, uh, some, some of those items that we can. So.
Thank you.
I mean, I think, I think you hit on the, the nail on the head too. Tom, when you said that we have to see what revenue is coming in, like they're, they've already hold, they're already holding the these, the tax, Homestead revenue, like, you know, that, that's going to be important to get those, the property tax revenues and those kind of revenues that we have relied on.
Yeah, the county's really not, you know, they're, they're, they're kind of saying that they, they figure that they're going to, their collections will be down, but they don't have any, anything substantive right now to, to, to really kind of back that up and, and see. On, on, on the, on the highlight side of that, I, I think Matt might have forwarded you, David Seed just settled another, one of our property tax deal. I think we had a hundred and what is it? A hundred and eighteen thousand on a settlement, Matt, that, that David just sent us this last week.
Yeah, it's about right. Yeah, we haven't put that up. Yeah, we haven't, we're going to have that in the next board meeting, the next agenda. So.
Okay. Well, you know, I love that.
So Matt, this is Joe again. I, I have a question. The, the payment that's made to like the ODE accounts receivable system, and that's an electronic payment then, right? It's all, it's one payment at one time?
Correct.
Okay, that's great. Because I'm, I'm all for basically maybe, you know, cutting that check or actually, cutting the check or actually putting it through the, the the accounts receivable, because I think it's cleaner that way. It doesn't overlap fiscal years like you were saying. And I, I mean, the, the way that they're applying for this is insane. I mean, it's crazy. I mean, I've never seen anything like it before, but I mean, okay.
Yeah, I was, oh, I'm sorry. No, I agree a hundred percent with you. I, I mean, I was frustrated just trying to get back to OD's methodology and then kind of spell it out here for everybody to see. And then I was really glad that they sent out this spreadsheet again here with that insufficient amount just for all districts. But I can kind of check and see, okay, you know, this is their, this is the answer to how they're doing it, the hundred ninety-four thousand, nine forty-six for us. And I just wanted to break the math down and see how they arrived at it. And it was very crazy. It's very cumbersome. I don't know how they even thought about this in the first place to get here. Crazy. It's, yeah, I mean, for me, if I was doing it again, I would have just, you know, grabbed all six hundred school districts and said, what are your cuts? Send an invoice out. You know, we're going to get this back and we're done with it. We're going to book it that way.
It's exactly what I would have done too. So like, but I, I think that your, your suggestion is, is probably the, the best option because it makes it a lot cleaner, makes a lot less complex too. So basically, I, I, I agree with basically repaying that through the receivable system. Well, that, that payment will go out when? Like, like, like in, in June then?
Yes. So we're, tonight, it's just for discussion which direction we want to go. And then within June's first board meeting, I'll have everything prepared for the board to approve it. And then right after that, we'll go ahead and make it so it falls within fiscal twenty. So it's the correct time period that we have to cut.
That makes sense. Thank you for the explanation.
Sure.
Yeah, Matt, Matt, for what it's worth, yeah, I, I concur. As long as you're going to keep in the same fiscal year, I'm, I'm not so concerned with how you, how you square with the ODE, but I do agree with you that keeping in this fiscal year is important.
Okay. Gotcha. So that's the direction it sounds like from everybody here tonight to roll with including it in the fiscal twenty calculations that we have.
Yep.
Okay, awesome. I will do that. So it'll be on the agenda for the next board meeting. Let's move forward with it. And then item B, eight B, Mr. Name, and this is circling back to your question that you had. So what we have here is just, we're going to need to establish the new fund for the CARES Act money that we have coming to us. So similar to how we created a new fund back in September of two thousand nineteen for the Student Wellness and Success Fund, which is fund number four sixty-seven, we will need to create a new fund for the CARES Act money we will receive. The new fund for the CARES Act will be fund five oh seven. We will have on the agenda for the June tenth board meeting. So if we go back to September, two thousand nineteen, our board meeting, this was an item that we had, which was a motion to establish the Student Wellness and Success Fund, which was fund number four sixty-seven. So that's just, you know, the board approval of creating a new fund that we have here for the school district to solidify it on our books. I like to do it that way.
So much is going to be, Matt?
Yes. So we have here in this spreadsheet from the state, I believe, passed this one out. And this was the amount of the total funds that we received. It's, there's two acronyms. So it's CARES Act and E S S E R. And I'll explain more of that when we vote to create this new fund at the next board meeting. But for Mr. Shujaki's question, for our, our school district, the amount that we're going to see in CARES funds coming to us is going to be here, which is sixty-one thousand, thirty-four dollars and forty-one cents. And this column to the right would be any amount that has, then I'll go back to the top, any amount that would be non-public, so owed to a non-public entity that would be in the borders of those school districts. Like, for example, Akron has one point two million dollars of this allocation for that. But again, for us, if I go down to our page, the amount that we're going to receive is sixty-one thousand, thirty-four dollars and forty-one cents. If I go to the last attachment that we have here, this is from our CCIP and our safe accounts. So this is how we track everything with ODE through their portal. It's called the safe account. So we're looking at fiscal two thousand twenty-one. So ODE has already uploaded the allocation, which is the sixty-one thousand, thirty-four dollars and forty-one cents in fiscal two thousand twenty-one for our school district, Cogge Heights Local Schools. And we can see here that they've already applied, this is ODE, the UCAS fund number of fund five oh seven. So we know that that's correct, the five oh seven, because that's in ODE's budget allocation in the CCIP for the amount that we have. So again, we know the amount, sixty-one thousand, thirty-four dollars and forty-one cents. We'll create the new fund at the next board meeting. And then at that time during the next board meeting, I kind of didn't want to overload tonight. I know there's kind of a lot of items on the agenda. But Mr. Name, we'll talk about more of the CARES Act funds and what their allowable expenses are that we can use the sixty-one thousand dollars for in the available time period. I believe it goes to the end of two thousand twenty-two. But there's no rush to expend these funds at this point in time for our district. So we don't have to worry about fiscal two thousand twenty. But again, we can take our time and really go through it thoroughly at the next board meeting and any others after that we need to just talk about the plan we have with that.
When, when are we anticipating these funds to come to our school?
I'm sorry?
When do we anticipate this, these funds to come to, to our school?
Sure. Well, this budget allocation right here in ODE's safe account is sixty-one thousand, thirty-four dollars and forty-one cents. So essentially, we already have it, but we have to get reimbursed for expenses. So this is a grant fund, like our other grant funds that we have, like our title grant, for example. So if it works the same way, which I'm thinking it does, we expend the funds first. So let's say, for example, I'm going to buy a bunch of boxes of Kleenex and it costs a hundred dollars. So what I would do is within fund five oh seven, I would code, you know, the supplies, which would be Kleenex to the safety line, let's say, for example, and we would allocate the full sixty-one thousand, let's say here, for a hundred dollars of that. And then what would happen is we would spend, you know, a hundred dollars on the Kleenex and we would apply for a cash request on that ream. So we apply for reimbursement from ODE. What they would do is reimburse us after they look at the documentation, make sure we have the correct documentation on that. They would reimburse us the hundred dollars that we spent. So we spend first and then get reimbursed after for it.
Okay.
But the money essentially is there. But again, they have it accounted for in fiscal two thousand twenty-one. There is a way, I, I saw that you can kind of start working on fiscal twenty expenses, but we're not in that, and we don't have to do that at this point in time. And there's only another month left in the fiscal year for that anyways. So fiscal twenty, yeah, it just works perfectly for fiscal twenty. But again, the sixty-one thousand is there. It's already been allocated to us through the state of Ohio. So we just have to, on a reimbursement basis, ask for those funds as we go.
Hey, Matt, this is Joe. I have another question. So like, I mean, maybe this is not for this meeting, it's for the next meeting, but how's the, how's that allocation work? Like, like, do we, is there just a plot of money that's applied to the Ohio school systems? And we get like a percentage based upon what size or something like that?
Yeah, and I can, one funds. Use our Title I funding as the basis to determine who gets what, Joe.
I see. Okay. And I, I, I saw in there like a couple of things that they could possibly use them for. I don't know that you had those allocations. Like, some of them were like salaries, supplies, those type of things. So there's, there's room for like, even like maybe some of the salary things I talked about before that maybe, I don't know.
They don't give us the option to ask it for more money. They just essentially tell us based on what our title funding expenditures are, this is what, this is how the percentages break down to the different school districts. So we can, we can account for it, as Matt said, any way we want. We could probably account for the entire amount with what we spent in technology to, to get us through the, the COVID crisis, but well, you know, we'll break that out the, the way we need to. Yeah, in a perfect world, I'd like to be able to go back and get more funds, but there, there, there's, that, it is what, that is what we're going to be allotted. That's what we have to account for in the end. I think the problem comes on the other end is that if districts don't account for the money, then the, the, the state may, like with other grants, the state, the money goes back to the state and then the state will then reallocate it at a later date. I don't imagine that anybody that's right-thinking in this situation is going to not, not for all those CARES fund, that CARES fund, because we all got slapped by the state as far as cuts we're concerned.
Yeah, I'm sure. No one's going to forfeit the funds at all. So makes sense. No, thank you both for the explanation. That makes sense.
Yep. And that's all I have for tonight.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Moocho. Mr. Revins, you have the floor.
Okay, nine A, motion to adopt the Cogge Heights Student Handbook for Cogge Heights High School and Middle School for two thousand twenty, twenty-one as recommended. B, motion to approve the Cogge Heights Elementary School and Pre-Kindergarten Family Handbook for two thousand twenty, twenty-one as attached. Motion C, motion to approve the class of two thousand twenty graduates per the attached list. D, motion to approve the attached list of two thousand twenty, twenty-one student fees as recommended per the attached list. E, motion to adopt Pearson Personal Finance Literacy Resource Textbook, Madera, Personal Finance Literacy effective with the two thousand twenty, twenty-one school year. F, motion to approve adoption of Pearson's Advanced Placement Physics Resource Textbook, Knight's College Physics, A Strategic Approach, effective two thousand twenty, twenty-one school year. G, a motion to adopt Pearson's Supplemental Health Resource Textbook, Prentis Hall, two thousand fourteen, Human Sexuality Student Addiction, Edition. H, motion to adopt McGraw-Hills School Health Resource Textbook, Glencoe Health, two thousand fourteen, effective twenty, twenty-one. I, motion to adopt McGraw-Hills Middle School Health Text Resource Textbook, Teen Health, two thousand twenty-one, effective twenty, twenty-one school year. J, motion to adopt Heinemann Publishing, Hawthorne Mifflin-Hartcourt, Foundness Pennell Guided Reading Resources for grades K to five, effective two thousand twenty, twenty-one. Agreements, Contracts and Membership, Motion to Approve a Three-Year Agreement with Sintas for Uniform Supplies Rental Service from August first to two thousand twenty to August first, two thousand twenty-three. B, motion to approve Membership Renewal with the Alliance for High Quality Education from two thousand, July one, two thousand twenty to June thirty, two thousand twenty-one. Employment Classified Staff, Motion to Approve a Change in Assignment for Megan Schwab from position of Co-Curricular Special Project Secretary to the Position of Secretary Assistant Superintendent, effective July one, two thousand twenty, per the adopted salary schedule, Secretary B, twelve-month, step ten, contingent upon satisfactory completion of BCI, FBI background checks. B, motion to approve employment of Aaron Zink, a Secretary for Athletic Special Projects for a one-year limited contract, two thousand twenty, twenty-one school year. Secretary, Secretary B, ten and a half month, step two, contingent upon BCI FBI records checks. C, motion to adopt the Attachment Memorandum Understanding with Chase dated May twenty-first, two thousand twenty. Employment supplemental positions, motion to approve the attached list of individuals on one-year athletic supplemental staff contracts for fall sports in the stipulated positions during two thousand twenty, twenty-one school year, per the adopted wage schedule, contingent upon fall sports being permitted to resume and successful completion of BCI FBI fingerprint checks if applicable. B, motion to approve the listed individuals on supplemental contracts in the stipulated positions for two thousand twenty, twenty-one, per the adopted wage schedule, contingent upon successful BCI FBI background checks. C, motion to approve the employment of Gary Miller as a lead man for the Resident Educator Program for one-year supplemental contract for two thousand twenty, twenty-one school year. D, motion to approve employment of following individuals as two thousand twenty summer maintenance age, per the adopted miscellaneous pay rate. Keller Olowski, effective May twenty-sixth through August, two thousand twenty, Megan Ellis, effective June eighth through August the two twenty. I ask for approval of those items.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Hold on.
I'll make a motion.
They have the motion about Mrs. Schukert. I'll second. Is there any further discussion?
Yeah, just go to, I'll, I'll put Pat up first. Pat, any major changes or highlight in the student handbook?
No, we, we stayed pretty flat this year. So we updated staff changes, obviously some staffing turnover. There's an updated school calendar. Those are obvious ones. We did update the Ohio Department of Education graduate, graduation seal language for the class of two thousand twenty-three. So that's one of the things that came into focus this school year as we got further information from the Ohio Department of Education. In order to graduate our class of two thousand twenty-three and classes beyond. In order to graduate our class of two thousand twenty three and classes beyond, we'll need to earn at least two seals. One of those seals, there are twelve seals available. One of those can be, one of those needs to be state defined, but there are three graduation seals that we have the autonomy to to locally define. Those are the student engagement seal, the fine arts seal, and the community service seal. Ryan Kelber, our athletic director, worked on kind of building out this these seal requirements with our teachers as part of his administration practicum. The community service piece just seemed like it was such a low-hanging fruit situation for us. We already have a pretty robust and built-out community deal, community service program with our our graduates earning sixty hours. So we kind of went ahead and said, okay, that's going to be our local interpretation for the community service seal. With fine arts and student engagement, Ryan reached out to the different different non-academic co-curriculars and I'm sorry, non, yeah, non-athletic co-curriculars and athletic extracurriculars and worked with them to determine language that would meet those requirements. And you can see that more more specifically spelled out on pages seventeen and eighteen. Somewhat related, a young lady by the name of Samantha Caleres, none other than the daughter of Dr. Ted Caleres, approached me in March about proposing to allow or proposing for us to consider having students in non-athletic co-curricular activities, so things like drama club, chess club, et cetera, giving them the opportunity to potentially earn a varsity letter. So again, Ryan, myself, and Sam worked together with some of the non-athletic co-curricular advisors around what that would look like. And and we loosely arrived that students actively participate actively and successfully participating for two two years would have the opportunity to earn a letter. So really good stuff there. Again, very innovative idea on Sam's part, and I think it was part of her Eagle Scout badge was, you know, wanted to propose something that would leave a lasting impression, lasting legacy on us. So she obviously did that. But that that is a little more, that's spelled out a little more detail on page sixty eight. But those those were the big, those were the big high-ticket updates.
Joy, the elementary pre-K updates on that?
Sure. Not a lot of major changes. It was mostly just cleaning it up and making it a little less wordy. It was very wordy. So I tried to summarize some of those sections and remove things that were repeated over and over, as well as I reorganized it to make it a little easier to follow. The major changes are switching from the quarter to trimester. That was reflected in a couple of areas. We updated some of the information under medical because we, not because of COVID, actually, more because of issues we've had with with parents not wanting to pick up their children when they have free birthday things. So we felt like we needed to clean that up a little bit. That was even before any of this came about. So people will think it's because of COVID, but that's okay. It just adds to what we're doing. And then just added some information about volunteers and and the policies that we have regarding our guidelines regarding when parents come to visit and volunteer, that they cannot take pictures of other students and post them on social media and things like that. So really just a few minor changes and cleaning up the language, nothing major.
Anything on any of those curriculum items, Ted?
No, I kind of explained already with the with the adoptions. We we need to fill the holes for the health. Mr. Mr. Patterson in AP Physics was operating with a with a different textbook from an from an honors physics course. So we needed to match up AP Physics with that new textbook. I was going to say, Mr. Evans, we're probably, depending on what what our requirements are for a fall return, we may have to make some addendums to the staff or the student handbooks to match some of those policy and procedures. So but that's going to come later when we know more, have more information.
And just so the boards are aware that any any mandates, just as this year, when the governor comes out and and does what he does, that kind of supersedes whatever's in the handbook. So we they the principals put the handbook together based on the fact that we're going to be in school and operating in school. There's it it wouldn't make a lot of sense to put in all the different options or alternatives that we might face in there. Just know that if the government comes in and makes, depending on what they come across with as far as what we're going to have to do and how we're going to have to do it, the handbook gets adjusted to meet that. So there's no way to account for that in advance. So we just kind of we're heading down the same path we've head down the entire time. So.
Before we proceed, I do want to thank Mr. Cohen and Ms. Houchen for for expending the extra effort to not only give us updated documents, but I appreciate seeing that high global summary of changes documents as well as the markup. That sure makes going through those documents much easier. So thank you to both of you and everybody else that helped. I appreciate it.
No problem.
The three-year contract with SINTAS for uniform supply rental services, that's for that's part of our chase agreement with them. Membership, the Alliance for High Quality Education, I think the Alliance has been a good a good place for us to be. We've got, it keeps us aligned with schools that are in very similar situations as far as high-performing schools, schools that don't get a great deal of funding from the state of Ohio on the per pupil. That's the group that's right now working with Matt Dolan. They they lobby and advocate for a lot of things that originally started as a TPP group. And we were, quite honestly, we were one of the founding members of that group. And then for a number of years, we dropped out. So we've been back in for about four years now. And but that's a that's a good group to align ourselves with moving forward. Megan Schwab's moving over from the Athletic Director Secretary to the to Ted's secretary. She'll stay on a twelve-month contract. Aaron Zing's going to step in as the Athletic Director Secretary. That'll be a ten and a half month contract. The memorandum of understanding with Chase is in regards to the the one-time maximum five days rolled over to next year, as you saw. And it's got to be used next year. So that was a that's verbiage that John Britton put together for us as far as that's concerned. The fall supplemental contracts, just know that each of the fall supplemental contracts will contain wording this year that reflects whether or not the season takes place. John sent us some wording. That will actually be a part of the contracts that the teachers get. So they know what part would be prorated and and what have you, depending on what would go on with the fall sports, if and when, depending on what kind of release we get. Although the way it's trending right now, it looks like we may be able to be back. So and supplemental contracts for the school year, those are department chairs and what have you there. Gary Miller, big shoes to fill, he stepped in as the lead manner for the district, Phil and Nancy Winerka's shoes there. And the two additional summer aides are due to two of our aides that we had previously hired, picked up some college internships. So we so this is not actually an addition. This is the the same number that we had with, so there's two down from what we had originally approved. And any questions on any of those items?
I just had one.
Yeah.
In regards to the SINTAS uniforms, and you said it's part of the chase agreement, have we looked into, would there be any cost savings to purchase uniforms over renting them?
We still have to be responsible for laundering them. So we don't and we don't keep our laundress on full time. So we would still have the contract with SINTAS to to then launder the uniforms. So I we we, to answer your question, no, we haven't looked at it because this is just, it's the rental is been what we what we stayed with. So.
All right. So if we bought these uniforms for the employees, they they wouldn't be expected to have to wash them?
Part of the kids is in their contract that they that we provide them uniforms. So.
So I have one question on the textbooks that we're purchasing tonight and kind of stepping back for more broadly, maybe Dr. Caleres or Tom, I'd have some idea about what proportion of the publisher's materials now or the publisher's textbooks offerings include some type of an online component? Is it the norm or is it the exception these days? And should we expect to see more of that in the future?
I think we're probably well above ninety ninety percent of what what's being offered has some kind of online supplement or or carryover with it. Ted, you know, chime in on that because Ted, those people are talking to Ted every day of the week. So.
Okay. Yeah, just I thought it would be a high percentage, but I didn't know, you know, what it seems like it could be going in that direction. But I'm just curious to know if that's what we should expect to see more of.
Man, you know, some districts have even moved away from, you know, the hard, the books themselves. And I, we had a big discussion a couple of years ago. And then I think probably the one time we had some parents come and actually talk at a board meeting where they wanted, they still wanted the books. They wanted their kid to bring a book home that the that just the online access to it. They didn't feel was a good option. So, you know, we, maybe two or three years ago, we'd even looked at maybe not buying the textbooks and just buying the online edition since we're using Chromebooks and what have you. And several parents sat down and said, you know, we really that that doesn't that doesn't work for us. We don't think it'll work for our kids. So we didn't press real hard with it, but we just kind of threw a feeler out there at that time. But we stayed with the textbooks.
Yeah, most of the adoptions, no matter how you do it, they're they're either hardbound or consumable textbooks. But the the online, the online isn't automatic for them. So it's usually you don't usually you 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 can, you're going to pay for both no matter what. So it's most of the major adoptions come with that online component, also with that online component for the teachers.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Is there's if there's no further discussion, we could have a full vote then on the superintendent's consent agenda.
Mrs. Schuker?
Aye.
Mr. Dobbins?
Aye.
Mrs. Edder?
Aye.
Mr. Suchacki?
Aye.
Mr. Namon?
Aye.
The motion passes five zero. Mr. Evans, any further discussion?
Just a couple of updates. And I wasn't part of the, I didn't sit in on the meeting today. Sitting's been a bit of a chore for me. So I have to look back. I'm going to listen in on one of the meetings that took place today. But, you know, the legislature is going to be out next week sometime. They're going to break for the summer. So we're still hopeful that Matt Dolan's stuff gets brought before him. Although we don't, at this point, I don't I don't know. I don't I don't see it. As far as what, you know, there's we're still looking for some relief from the budget cuts as far as that's concerned. Those administrative comments that that Matt has up on the screen there, I I thought I deleted them on the good copy, but apparently not. Those are those are from last year when Sandy Cutten paced and she left my comments from last year. And so those are actually a year old. So you can, none of that is pertinent to what we're talking about right now. As far as the COVID nineteen updates are concerned, we've got a letter ready. I'll get it out to the invites for the work group this week. I've got kind of pushed back by being home the last couple of days. But it's still going to move in that direction, make sure we have an alternate plan in place. The state has not come out with any, as I said before, they're going to come out with some specifics and then the rest is going to be quote unquote local control. And if you watch the news today, all kinds of speculation, all kinds of polls, will you send your kids, won't you send your kids? So we know there's a lot of items that we're going to have to address as we work through that work group. And we'll do so tomorrow. The coaches, fall coaches are going to meet with myself, Dr. Clers, and Mr. Kelber with the announcement last week that some of the sports training can take place. We want to make sure that we've got protocols in hand and published and that we are following the guidelines that are set forth because a lot of different things are being sent out right now as far as what you can do. And for instance, with with the football, after every pass, you have to wipe the ball down. We think that's the way it reads. So depending on what phase of this that we're in, and, you know, obviously, it's all non-contact, but we can get go good, get some of the physical training back up. Notice what our protocols in our weight room will be, what additional sanitation efforts will take place, tests of the trainers on board with that. We're looking at some filling stations for water bottles as well. So there's a there's a, that's going to be a pretty in-depth meeting tomorrow as we set up our protocols and get those out to everybody. So they know that what we're going to have to do to put those in place. I know some schools Tuesday were back out on the field without protocols in place. I don't think that's a very safe thing to do right now. So but our coaches are all on board with this. They've all done a tremendous amount of research and their coaches associations have in, so we're going to put a list of things together there. So I want to thank Mr. Kelber and those fall coaches for like really being ahead of that. With the recent ruling about, you know, weddings of three hundred or less can take place, I'm somewhat optimistic that we may be able to pull off graduation in 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 July. So we we've got a plan together. I'll I'll meet with the class advisors and we'll we'll get that into the county health department. I'm going to call first before I submit it to make sure that they'll consider that in the same way they would a wedding because if they're going to tell me there's still no mass gatherings, then I'm going to hold on to it until we get some relief from that. So I don't want to turn in and know that I'm automatically going to get rejected. I want to know that they're going to consider it. Because quite honestly, the plan that we put on paper, we can we can, every student can have four, four people at the graduation. We would put seat, actually seat the parents on the football field and seat the athletes or seat the the seniors in the stands. We can space them out. We know we've got the chairs to do that. We know we've got the spacing to do that. So we would have less than, actually, less than three hundred people. So we would have less than a wedding allocated wedding would have. Also, planning on doing a maybe a senior walk beforehand to the district and then a parade afterwards through the through the communities. I've already talked to two of the mayors about that. They're really excited on board with that. This Friday, Brooklyn Heights is going to do a parade. They were going to try to reach out to Valley View and Cog Heights, too. They've invited our teachers to be part of the parade, just at the end of the school year, kind of recognition for the kids. So I'll send some stuff out to the teachers tomorrow. Hopefully, we can get some teachers to attend that. And just to recognize the end, Joy's doing her her virtual, her Zoom fifth grade promotion, which she's really looking forward to. She said what a treat it was to talk to all the fifth graders at once on Zoom. Some of them don't know how to mute their mics. So Pat tomorrow is doing the fifth or the eighth grade promotion. So we're trying to keep as many of those things in place as possible to to tie the year up best as possible here with with our students. So.
Tom, can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
So again, this is coming from my education background and talking to teachers, a couple of things. One is, are are you guys, are you setting like a date, like we'll know by August first? I I know it depends on where like the governor is and everything like that. But is there is there a point where we're putting so much on teachers to to prepare? You know what I mean?
You're a hundred percent correct because the PD is a big part, which is why so many schools want have plans in place right now because they want to do the PD for those plans. We're, in a worst case scenario, Lindy, I may come to board and say, let's start school five days later. So we're going to have five days of PD with our teachers to get ready for it. If it's something really drastic, quite honestly, if it's if it's a split schedule, something that's some remote learning and then onsite learning, I think our teachers did a phenomenal job of that this year. We'd obviously need to want to brush up on some of that. But I can see that going a lot of different directions because I I'd want some some teachers that would be coordinators maybe on the elementary, middle, and high school level of what what that online learning look back look like. Because that's too much. It's too much to ask the teacher, say, hey, I want you to teach eight hours a day. And oh, yeah, by the way, I want you to get another eight hours a day worth of online learning for the kids that are off that day if it's a split schedule type thing. So there's got to be some stuff within reason there. I've got some ideas. I really need to work with this work group to vet some of those out to make sure that we've got a solid plan in place. But yeah, you're a hundred percent correct. That, like I said, a worst case scenario, we may come back and say, hey, we're going to push back the starting date five days to give our teachers some time to to maybe work on some curricular items. I don't want to do that now because there's no, nobody has any idea what the governor's going to come out with. And it's and when I sit in line with a hundred and sixty superintendents and I hear everything from A to Z, it could be really frustrating to put hours and hours of work in and say, well, this 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 doesn't fit or this won't work based on what he's what the guidelines are. So supposedly, the guidelines are going to be minimal as far as distancing and how many you can put on a bus. But those are the things that we need that are concrete in order to put the plan in place. If they're going to tell me only six kids can ride one of our buses, we have a problem. So does every other district in the state of Ohio. They know that. But that was one of the knee-jerk things that came out of that work group was that, hey, the state's going to tell you that you got to be every other seat and only one kid per seat. Well, there's not a school district in the state of Ohio that can transport kid under those conditions. You know, six foot apart in the hallways, we know that's not doable. You know, I told the group, I was at Sam's Club the other night, and here's a mom and she's got her three kids with her and they all got their masks on and they're all wiping everything down. And the oldest kid's a middle-aged girl. And just as I turn around, the girl pulls her mask down and sneezes. And the mom says, that's what your mask is for, that you're supposed to leave the mask on. She goes, that's gross, Mom. I'm not sneezing in my, but that and I told you, that's a micro of what we're going to experience on a school-wide basis. I can't imagine Joy walking down the hall. And we know how the the kindergarteners are all huggers. The kids want to be together. They want to see their friends.
Yes, are uncomfortable. They're not comfortable for adults. I can't imagine kids for seven hours.
I can't imagine my teachers teaching in a mask. We're a business, it's a talking business, thank God. But, you know, I teach it in a mask, I would I would see that something difficult to do. So until we see actually how that shakes itself out. So until we see actually how that shakes itself out, you know, we'll start working on some generalized plans. And then we'll really get, get finite with that as we move forward with it though.
My, my other like part of that too is will staffing be decided like sooner rather than later? So like teachers know, like if they're co-teaching something or, you know, even like with your, like the peer professionals and stuff like that.
Yeah. Another, you know, we've got what our regular schedule would be, but we know if we go to some type of split schedule and do some things offsite, that we're going to, we're going to have to have some cooperation from both Chase and Chad to say, listen, to make this work, we're going to have to flex some schedules. In other words, I'm going to pull some aids from some people. Maybe I, maybe if I've got half of my elementary building over in, in Caga Heights Village Hall, we do extended specials where I send my art teacher over for an hour and a half and I send my music teacher over for an hour and a half during the day. So we're going to have to really get flexible at the schedules. That's why we brought Joy into the work group. Because the biggest, the toughest group to work on a schedule with is that K to six group. We know that seven through 12, those kids can, if, if they're, if they're on a, on a day off a day, that they can do some things remote by themselves. But that K to six has to have some kind of supervision and we've got to be in a position to provide some help for our parents that have, our, our single parents that are working or two, two parent working families. The expectation of what we did this spring, it, it's worn itself thin right now. And like, again, we did it better than anybody else did, but I know a lot of our parents as well as any, a lot of parents are spent right now. They're, they're ready to be done with classwork and, and into a summer mode. So we, we have to make sure that we've got a really solid plan in place that not only works for our teachers and our kids, but works for our families, our parents that are working as well.
Thank you.
I had one thing I wanted to ask.
Okay.
You talked about the fifth grade promotion and the eighth grade promotion. My very favorite day of the year is the senior nights with the scholarships. And I think it's usually like, would be like tomorrow would be it. Is that planned? Does that happen? Did I miss it?
They're all recorded.
Yeah, we, we recorded, all the scholarship people came in and recorded them. I think tech's in the process right now. Put, bringing that all together into one big video, a pad, an opening and closing speech to that. But I re, I recorded the Doug Corlett and the different scout families came in and the different groups came in and recorded their scholarship recipients. So we're going to then present that as a video to the seniors at some point. I, I, I think it's, it's, it's being, I think our tech department's working hard to put that together right now.
Okay. I was afraid I missed it.
Well, and, and Pat, really, we tried to have some of those groups record stuff and send it in, but the, some of the quality recordings wasn't real high. And we didn't want, we didn't want, so what we did is we just said, hey, can y'all just come in? We set the backdrop up in the library. We did the, we set the podium up. So then the, the quality will be the same all the way throughout the entire video.
Good. I look forward to seeing it.
Very good. Thank you for those updates, Mr. Evans. Do appreciate it. Is there, we're onto a board discussion. One of the items that came up during the agenda planning meeting was the idea that at some point we need to consider moving back into in-person board meetings. And Mr. Suchacki had a perspective given his dual board seat and then Mr. Evans also had. So I, I would offer to each of them to open the conversation.
Yeah, you're a day early from my perspective because tomorrow's the first meeting. But we're going to try to do it live or I should say onsite. There's an option that all board members can call in if they choose to. You don't have to come to the onsite meeting. You of course, according to the guidelines of the state can vote, even if you're not there, which is of course unusual during the pandemic. We don't know at this point how many people are going to show up. Masks are recommended, but the way the room is set up, we should not need masks during the meeting, which is a good thing because it's kind of hard to have a conversation with masks on.
How is the room set up, Gary, for, for?
I've not seen it. Like I said, we're a day early. I've been assured it's set up that way, but I have not personally seen it.
So Gary, one of the things we talked about during the agenda meeting was that maybe you could send an email to Tom and maybe we could put something in a Friday update about if there's anything unusual or any quirks that around from your CBCC board meeting.
Yeah, I can do that. Get through the meeting and I'll let you know how it goes.
Great, thank you.
And you know, these have worked better than I ever would have imagined, quite honestly. And, and you know, I was, we have the ability in the library to space the tables out a little bit more to make sure that we're that six foot. And unless, unless the board decides to put me on leave, I think attendance at the meetings will still stay low. Maybe, I don't know, maybe they won't show up.
Worth, I'm really not in favor of, of doing in person until, I would just wait till the next school year. I, I know having like family members that are high risk, I just, I don't know. I, I just am not in favor. But maybe Gary, like you said, that two tiered kind of approach. I know I have, I had to go in my building this week to do the student distribution of their lockers and we had to wear masks. Like we were told and we weren't within six feet of people. So I just, I feel like this is working so well. And I, I don't feel like there's anything that would be different if we were in person other than we could see what everyone's wearing below their, you know, waist level, you know? But like I, I feel like we're, we're still efficient in what we're doing with that.
I don't have, I agree with you, Lindy. I think it's going well this way. This is Mr. Mangus, the superintendent who's pushing to, to bring the meeting back online. I'm the one who said, you know, we really need to give people options. I'm the only one who wore the mask, a mask during our agenda review meeting last week, even though the room was set up for social distancing. So I, it's going to be interesting to see who, who comes and who doesn't.
And everybody's going to get to a comfort level at different time. And, and I think you, you just have to, you kind of have to let that evolve. And I, I would agree with Lindy that we're, it's been working so far. So maybe it might be something that we take a look at when we come back in August that possibly doing. But I, and that's going to be, that, and that's also a big part of our plan with the kids coming back in the building too. Different families are going to come back at different rates. Some parents are going to say, listen, I, we, we know there's kids out there with compromised immune system. We know that there's grandparents in some of those houses that, that with those kids. So those are all considerations that we have to take into account and we have to make sure that we accommodate for as we get back and get. So I think, you know, once we're back and in session, I think people will gradually come back. You know, some of them are saying not till there's a vaccine. I, I'm not, I don't want to be a predictor on that, but it's got to be at their comfort level, certainly. And I.
And I think we need to be following protocols, you know, as the leaders, if, if it's, you know, and I can't imagine having a board meeting with a mask on. I'm sorry. Like these are long enough. Sitting there, you know, with a mask on in the grocery store is miserable, like but trying to talk and I don't know. It's not.
Well, that was the point is to get, is to have a conversation tonight. No, no, no firm decisions, but just to get it out there. Because if nothing else, we do have to keep in mind that the reason why we're able to meet tonight is because of a, essentially a temporary state law. So at some point, the game's going to, not to say the game, but that law's effect is going to be over. I don't see it anytime in the near future, but it's just nice to have this conversation. And Gary mentioned that his board was moving a little bit quicker in that direction. So I've been curious to see what his feedback is.
I will let you know on Friday, Tom.
Okay.
Great.
And you can put it in the weekly update.
Very good.
Good. Well, we have, are there any other discussion items for the board to consider at this point? And if, if not, we can kind of meld into any committee reports or comments from board members.
One comment or, or those future items, can we get a July date on the calendar? Maybe not today, but next meeting, because it'll already be June.
I'll, I'll throw some, I'll throw some dates in the Friday update to consider.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. The only thing I would mention to the group is that if you, if you haven't had a chance to see the, the most recent OSBA newsletter, I don't know if it's a briefcase or whatever it is, but embedded within it, and this is for, for Tom and Matt's interest, is embedded within it is a spreadsheet that covers the success or lack thereof of all of the school levies throughout the state of Ohio in the spring elections. I think it's, you know, timely information and, you know, something worth, worth a consideration. If you don't have an access to it, Tom or Matt, I can send you the link.
Please do, because sometimes I can get in and sometimes I can't. Like I did that one, the one community meeting and then I was able to log in. Then it's for other stuff that it's not letting me register for. So I, OSBA is a little talkative with me. I don't know why.
Okay, all right.
Yeah.
If you.
Yeah, I was going to say, if you could email the link, that'd be great.
Okay, I'll do that. And then if you have any issues, let me know. But I, I perused it and I thought it was very interesting because it's very comprehensive. It explains what the purpose of the levies were and goes into a lot of detail without getting overly bogged down. And, you know, obviously it comes away with an overall success. So great. So that's all I have for the group this evening.
OSBA did call me and I did confirm that we're going to be doing a presentation next fall. So I told them we're very excited about it. So she's going to send some details out to me to do our best, our continuous improvement presentation at OSBA next fall.
I just wanted to add a comment too. Just thanks to the admin team since you guys are all on this. It's nice to see you all. But just thank you because I, I can't imagine being in your shoes right now and, and going through what you're going through and being the leader. So, you know, just thank you to all of you in person, as virtual person, for what you're doing and what you've done and what you're going to continue to do for our kiddos. And Mr. Coleman, thank you for everything you've done for our district.
Thank you, Lindy. It means a lot. I appreciate that.
Some of the things that you've done will, will have created quite a legacy, the, the drug prevention program and the tribe, the tribe talks. I really enjoyed listening to you roll out those programs and, and see the, the interest in the students. So, so thank you for doing that and best wishes to you and your future, future career.
Thank you. Thank you so much. God bless everybody.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Mr. Namon, do you have anything for the group?
Now I just got back on the comments that you had for Mr. Coleman too as well. But thank you for everything that you've done over the years, the year that you've been here at Caga Heights. You left a legacy as well. And then just really congratulations to like the, the individuals, the fifth graders that'll be promoted and the eighth graders that'll be promoted as well as the seniors now too as well. And hopefully we'll have a good wish. That's all.
Mr. Suchacki, do you have anything else?
I do have a few things. Tomorrow night is the CBCC board meeting, but I have a little bit of a preview for a couple of items that are already been published. We have Joe Jakubek.
Jacob Zach.
I can never remember how to pronounce their name. That's why I call her Julie. Anyhow, Joe has been elected as a vice president of the HOSA Association. That's Future Health Careers Student Association, the National Association. He's a, for the state of Ohio, he's a vice president. That's the first CBCC member ever to be nominated for an officer in that organization. Couple of things that are going to be on tomorrow's agenda, student fees are remaining unchanged this year. The CARES Act grant for CBCC is $82,000, but it applies only to adult education students. And of course it is paid back to the students themselves based on their activities. Some of the classes are returning to campus such as dental assistant, EMT, LPN with a maximum of nine students per class session. The programming and software labs are going to be renovated this summer and the exterior renovation, which we discussed a couple of months ago, is underway and should be completed in early August. And if there are any other things that come up during the meeting, I'll let you know next time.
Very good. Thank you.
Hey Gary, and this is probably a personal thing, but having a kid that's going to be in the CBCC next year, is there any talk about how the programs could be impacted? I mean, can you like maybe just see if there's, again, I know that we're preparing like Caga Heights and, you know, typical public schools are. But like, how is the CBCC preparing?
Well, their challenge is even more interesting because they have eight districts that are probably going to have eight different ways of dealing with the school year next year. So they are prepared for anything and everything. If people want to come to the building, they will conduct some, they will have education. They'll somehow be conducting classes. I don't have any details, of course. If people want to stay home, they'll take care of them at home. If people want to stay in their homeschools, they'll figure out how to do that.
Something like cosmetology, you know, like I have a friend whose daughter was, you know, got into the cosmetology program. I'm like, there's so many hours that that's the criteria. So just wondering how they're looking at.
One of the proposals I saw on the state level was they're really looking at doing, if they can't get in lab to do some extended internship type opportunities to try and meet hours. Although not, a lot of it wasn't really defined. And Gary and I had that conversation for your certification programs like COS that has hours, like your FIRE EMT that has hours, STNA has hours. So it becomes a little bit dicier there. In last talk with Dave, they were, they were still working through some of those things. Some of the professional organizations and certification organizations have been better, easier to work with than others. But they know that that's the big challenge in front of them, especially with some of those that are so prescriptive that a license comes along with it. So the, the first thing that I saw from the state was they were looking at some sort of expansion of internship hours on time, those types of things. But you're running the same thing there. People, because of the crisis, maybe don't necessarily want kids interning with them during that time. So it, that's a double edged sword a little bit.
It's really a very challenging situation, Mr. Schukert. I, I don't, we're working through it as best as we can. One of the things, for example, in the design areas, they're thinking about buying student modules that they can have at their house and they can program them and then either send them to the school or bring it to the school and then stick it on a machine to see if it works the way it's supposed to. So they're looking into expanding things like that as well. So it's, it's challenging and, and almost every area is going to have a unique approach to solving the issues. And like Mr. Evans just said, the organ, state organizations, the accrediting agencies are right in the middle of it. And then we can't do it without them being involved.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Wish I could give you more specifics, but there aren't any.
At least they're working on something and it's.
Oh, yeah.
Uplifting.
Thank you. And Mrs. Edder, do you have anything for the group tonight?
I just want to, everyone else has said it so eloquently. My heartfelt thanks really to all of our staff, our admin group, Superintendent Evans, Dr. Claris and all our teachers and our staff. They're doing what they can to make this challenging school year the best that it could be for our students. And I really, I got to tell you, I really am missing our, our traditional student achievement event. So I think that's what I've missed the most in, in this shelter at home, see you later kind of atmosphere that we're in. But I do want to say thanks to, to Mr. Coleman for his leadership and good programs that he has initiated here at Caga Heights. And I wish you all the best in your new adventure.
Thank you.
And I guess that's it.
Okay. Well, thank you, everyone. Moving on to item 16, public content. It should be noted that the Board of Education members received their agendas several days prior to the actual meeting. Plus they have had considerable opportunity to study and ask questions, et cetera. Number 17. Possible future agenda items. I think we may have discussed a few tonight, including whether we are going to set aside time for a July meeting. Or we're also going to talk about future in-person board meetings. Upcoming regular meetings, upcoming regular board meetings are scheduled for Wednesdays at 7:00 PM. On the following day, June 10th, June 24th, August 12th and August 26th, 2020. And unless there's any additional business, I could entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Okay, Mr. Suchacki moves. I'll second. Done if we do a roll call or if not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The motion passed at five zero. It's 8:28 PM and we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Good night.
Thanks, everybody.